We'll call this meeting for Tuesday, November 16th, to your order. I'll ask for the roll call, please.
Council, agency member Lingel.
Here.
Roger.
Present.
Durham.
Present.
Mayor Protam, Vice Chair Martner.
Present.
Mayor Chair Siminski.
Present. Invocation tonight, do we? Let's just, unless you would like to, Tony?
All rise, please. Bow your heads. Lord, we want to thank you for watching over us, guiding us, leading us in the right directions. We pray that you will watch over the incoming new people, work with them, give them the backbone that it's going to take to steer this community back on track, help us to do the right things tonight as we go on through our meeting, be with our servicemen and women overseas and here on our own soil. We pray that them and their families will never be without your warmth and your guidance. These things that we pray, amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Presentations presented elsewhere last week, I had the privilege of talking to a great lady at the Lompoc Skills and Rehabilitation Center. Cecilia Bunny Speaker was celebrating her 100th birthday, and she was surrounded by her friends there and by her family, some of whom had come from across the country, and it was a great pleasure to participate in that ceremony. Next on the agenda, we have the City Administrator's Executive Director's Status Report.
Nothing to report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Staff requests and announcements either? Council requests and announcements. Ms. Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to extend my condolences to the family of John Sterling for having the great loss. I met Mr. Sterling about three years ago, and he was a man that really cared for this community, and I am very saddened to see that he passed away shortly, so again, I'd like to extend my condolences to the family. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one announcement. Last Friday, November 12th, was Susan Halpin's last day as our wastewater superintendent. Beginning on November 29th, she takes on a challenging new position with a special district at Lake Elsinore in Riverside County. Susan held her position here as head of the wastewater program since October 6, 2003, and she will best be remembered for tackling the largest single capital improvement project ever undertaken by the city, our new solid, or our new wet waste wastewater treatment plant. Open recruitment has started to search for a replacement. Meanwhile, Tim Smith, the lab director at the wastewater plant, will be filling in as acting superintendent. Those of us in the city wish Susan well. We thank her for her leadership at the wastewater plant over the past seven years. There are no other requests and announcements. We'll move to oral communications. Maximum five minutes. I'll ask if you speak to us on any item of business of the city, and watch the lights.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Ralph Harmon, Lompoc. I just wanted to comment on consent item number five, the Water Quality Management Ordinance. And I wasn't able to speak on it when it was brought before the council because it's one of those late night things that never got to, at least when I was here. So I just want to make a couple of comments while no one thinks that we should not have good, clean water. Some of these regulations that are included within this are absurd. We have garage owners, businessmen, who, you know, take a lot of steps to make sure that the pollutants don't get into the wastewater system right now, and some of them have spent a lot of money to prevent that, and yet this allows just about anybody that wants to change their oil and let it drip down the driveway or out in the street or whatever, to go ahead and do that and pollute it. The rainwater is washing gallons of pollutants off the street, but yet we're going to take the businesses in California here and locally and force them to close up and leave. I can see a lot of shops here saying, no, you know, I can't comply with that any longer. Time to close up my doors and go home. And then we wonder why we don't have any businesses in town, the county, or the state. So maybe it's time just the city start, somebody has to start and tell these people that, hey, we got to come up with something that's more reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon.
Well, Skylar Lompok, actually the same subject. I've watched that program develop quite a number of years. It's always scared me, it still scares me today. Really, I would maybe ask that the council pull it. Most people probably don't know, there's 16 pages to the staff report alone. Many times, I know, staff feels things are remedial, oh, there's no problem, we'll just go through it, and then we, public officials later, or people get out, well, where did this come from? When did that happen? So I think it needs maybe a little airing tonight, maybe as little as they see come, Ms. Lawson coming up and telling us kind of what it does or doesn't do, or anything else. There's one main thing that concerns me in there. If my neighbor up above me has, I've got some contaminants coming off of his yard onto my place, I'm totally responsible. He gets away free. He says, oh, well, that's on your property, you have to take care of it. And that's what I read in here, and I don't think that's right. So I would suggest that we pull it and maybe discuss it a little bit tonight.
My name is Bob Wykoff. I'm the president of the Board of the Vennerburg Village Community Services District, and I know it's a little unusual to comment on an item on the consent calendar, but the wastewater services agreement between us and the city of Lompoc has gone through several months of development and finally has reached an agreement that I signed. And I would encourage Mayor Siminski, with the permission of the city council, to add his signature. Thank you.
Yes, Dwayne Homedahl, Lompoc. Two things. One, Susan did an excellent job, hate to see her leave, and we were talking about the utility commission later, but also, not only that, we don't know who's going to be selected, but the individual who she worked with and trained over the last year is an individual that I used to ask staff members to do, or is train somebody to replace you if you left. In my understanding, the way it looked, he has that ability, so we'll see what happens. So I think it's really good to see that happen. Hate to see her go, but you can't stop somebody from wanting to improve themselves. The other thing is that I talked about a lot when I was on the council is that weed abatement, and you just need to drive the railroad tracks again. You've got six-foot-high tumbleweeds on railroad track, and most of it's on private property. Railroad's finally cleaned it up, but we wish there's a way we could stop, and if they're going to take it down, we wish they would please spray it so it doesn't come back. But it's getting terrible again down there on Laurel Avenue. And the interesting thing, in a lot of places in town, we see the houses, some are getting cleaned up. On the news last night or today, they're talking about different areas where they're now filing suit against banks and such to clean up the property, make it so they don't look so bad. So you may want to look at that on some of these foreclosed properties that are really looking bad. That is a possibility, and there are several states and several communities doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Homedahl. Anyone else at this time? Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communications. We'll move on to the consent calendar. What are the wishes on the consent calendar? I'd like to make a comment of my own. I'm not going to pull the stormwater regs. This is the second time that we're hearing them. At the last meeting, we did get the full staff report, and we did discuss the regulations, and this is a second hearing and final approval, so I won't be recommending, but what are the wishes of the council with respect to that item?
Mr. Mayor, this is one of the items that we don't have a choice on, really. We're being told by the state that we either do it or restart paying penalties. So, you know, Mr. Harmon, I agree with you. There's a lot, a lot of regulations in there that just don't make sense. But we either go ahead and accept it as it is, the way it has been written up, and then fight the battle, or end up paying fines. So I agree with the mayor on this. There's not much we can do about that. At this point, I would recommend that we accept the consent calendar as is.
I think we have a motion to accept the consent calendar. A second?
I'll second it, but I do also want to make a comment on the stormwater. We've been fighting this thing for, I think it's three or four years, when it first started coming down to us and sent letter after letter to the board about our objections to it, and it was sort of like talking to the wall. But we did protest a lot, as I remember, and I know Mr. Skylar and Mr. Homedahl also were on council when we started this process. And as I understand it, this was the easy, not easy, a compromise. We used a model from Ventura to set up these discordance, according to what Ms. Lawson said at the last meeting. So, you know, we don't like it, and as Councilmember Durham said, it is one of those unfunded mandates that the state puts on us most of the time, so I'll second your motion.
Motion is second. I would like to comment, just one brief comment on the same subject. We've talked tonight about the new wastewater plant that we had to build, and the largest capital improvement in the city's history. When we were studying that one, and we were asking why we had to treat the water as significantly as we did and leave it as clean as we did when there was no one downstream and it was going right out to sea, we're not polluting any drinking water for any cities downstream, we were told that we had to meet the highest standards because the Corps of Engineers determined that the San Andres River is a navigable river, and therefore the highest standards would apply, and we couldn't fight that. So we, in the area of stormwater, in the area of some of these things, we're utterly at the mercy of the federal and the state government, as has been pointed out, and we have argued and we have fought, and so has most cities in California. We have a motion, and we have a second. Let's cast our vote for the consent calendar. That is approved unanimously. We move on to the hearing of objections to destroy weeds and remove rubbish, refuges, and dirt. This is a public hearing. Fire Chief Jeff, Acting Fire Chief Jeff States.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, and before you again with more parcels that we weren't on our first list again, and our recommendation is that we hold a public hearing to receive comments and information from the public to show cause why nuisance conditions upon subject property should not be abated and adopt Resolution 5683, par. 10, ordering the fire chief to abate such nuisances as declared on October 19, 2010 by Resolution 5672, par. 10, in the time and manner provided by the law. In the background of discussion, the Resolution 5672, the notices were mailed out to all property owners informing them of this public hearing, and also that if they abated all the nuisances by November 26, 2010, then the city would not impose administrative fees or special assessments authorized by the Government Code, Section 39573. And the fire marshal, which is me, has inspected all the properties, and there is still, the four listed on Appendix A, there was eight, and four of them did abate the nuisances, and these four are the remaining that have none.
If you hold by a second, we'll see, is there anyone from the public that would like to talk about the item on before us at this time? Seeing no one rise, we'll bring it back to the council. I have a question, Chief. All four of these are owned by, shown as being owned by the same resident.
Yes, they are.
Are there other properties that are owned by this resident that have also had, we've had problems with?
No. Not these, and these are at the end of L. Street Commerce Court in L., by Raytheon, where we had the little brush fire, and they go from there all the way to past Walmart.
Are there any other questions from, and, Mr. Jay?
Yeah. Mr. Homedahl brought up the tumbleweeds, and I know he and Mr. Scolari have been talking about those for months. Is there any way we can abate that, those properties along the railroad tracks?
Those, I don't, we haven't put them on the list, but we can go back and do it. I know sometimes there's a problem because it's the railroad right of way.
And, yes.
It's very difficult to get them to do anything.
Right. Like fix the tracks.
Yeah. We can certainly go back and put them on the.
Okay. I would suggest that we do that, because we've been hearing this for months, and, you know, those tumbleweeds would be tumbling all over town. I live out near this area and those lots out there. One of them had been partially mowed, as we were looking at it today, but, you know, I hope they finish the job.
Yes. Because the actually, the property owner or developer did actually call Miller Landscape to get a.
Oh, did he?
Bid for it, and they thought it was a little too high, so they're still searching.
Well, do like, who is it? Dieter Gunther does with this little lawnmower and up at the Y and mows it by hand. I've seen him up there doing that. Anyway, thanks for looking in the tumbleweed thing. Thank you.
Ms. Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I guess I'm a little concerned to hear that perhaps there has been some lots out there that have been overlooked regarding these tumbleweeds or something else. I mean, I'd like to get a reassurance that actually everything has been looked at, and you have found only four of these lots, vacant lots. So can you give us some assurance that that is the case?
Yes, and part of the, I don't want to make excuses, but part of the problem with our weed abatement was the fact that for the last eight years, the fire marshal was in the building department, and he took care of all that, and this year, approximately April, May, it was given back to the fire department. So we just went off the list that we were given.
Okay.
And when I went out and checked, I found properties that shouldn't be on the list, and then I also found properties that needed to be on the list. And unfortunately, I can't catch every one of them.
Okay. So from now on, it's going to be the fire department that will go and inspect or comb the city, I would say?
Yes.
And look for all of these vacant properties that are in violation?
Yes. And next year, when I come before you, all of them will be on one list.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments. Mr. Lingel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I want to thank you for getting on top of this, and I'm glad Ms. Martner brought it up, because I was going to do the same thing, that it's a new process you're doing, you're going to be looking at all of them, because the way I look at this, you know, obviously, we're still in a depression, we don't have a lot of money to do things, but this is the least expensive thing we can do for economic development, for beautifying our city, is keeping the weeds down. I know there is an expense here, but we're going to be charging the property owner back for the expenses on this. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So it's something that I really am glad that you're going to stay on top of this. The other thing is, once they do abate the weeds, are they going to be re-inspected periodically to make sure that they're done, or is it going to be back to like an annual basis?
No. As per council request, it's going to be an ongoing.
Good.
Process, and we'll keep track of them.
And as other code enforcement issues are in town here, we have a complaint driven. If I call the city, if I call the fire department, and I tell you about a property down the street from me, complaint driven, you'll look at that property as well?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay.
Because these four properties, I missed them, and actually Raytheon called us and complained about them.
Good. So I'm encouraging people out there in TV land to call us with your problem properties, and we will be taking care of them. Again, I say it's, I think it's the least expensive thing we can do to beautify our city, so thank you very much.
We have a motion before us?
I would like to make the motion that we adopt Resolution 5683, ordering the fire chief to abate said nuisances as declared on October 19, 2010.
Do we have?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any other comments? Seeing none, let's cast our vote. If that passes unanimously, we'll move on to new business. Lucille Breeze.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. This is a request to set a hearing date for the appeal of the Planning Commission denial of certification of the final environmental impact report for the Walmart expansion project. The council was provided this evening with a letter from Manat Phillips Phillips, which is the applicant council, agreeing with the staff report recommended date of January for the appeal hearing. And the reason that staff is recommending a date in January of 2011 is to allow public participation, maximum public participation in this discussion before the council, which will be very intense and has really been something of interest in the community. Staff is available for any date that the commission would like to set, I'm sorry, that the council would like to set, but we are suggesting that the January 18th date would be the next available date, and I'm available if there's any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Breeze? Ms. Roger.
Yeah, I have a question. So the Planning Commission still has to do up or down on the development plan for the Walmart development plan, is that correct?
There was no discussion of the development plan due to the fact that.
I have to recuse myself from this discussion. She needs. It's because I live, I live near, I live in Stone Brook, and the property that we own, the park property also, and so it's within 500 feet of the project, so.
I'll open the, I'll open the subject now for public comment if anyone from the public would like to discuss this. The only item on the agenda, the only action that we're taking right now is to set a date for the hearing, and that date is the 18th, or proposed to be the 18th of January.
Mr. Mayor and City Council members, I would like to make a comment on Walmart. It is my understanding that Walmart has been going on for over six years, and, excuse me, and I'd like to make a few points. First, Walmart did not hire the EIR survey for the expansion, the city did, and Walmart paid for the expense. I've got to lower this so I don't have to stand on my tippy toes. Walmart has not been the cause of the blight in Lompoc. Payless Shoes Next Door has not suffered from Walmart having a shoe department. Vons West decided not to renew its lease. Walmart has nothing to do with this. Walmart expansion would bring in more property tax above the $785,000 they already pay. And did you know that they pay sales tax in the amount of over $800,000 over the past two years? And did you know Walmart has made donations in the amount of $30,000 in the city of Lompoc and gave the American Legion $2,500? Excuse me. They have supported the Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Relief and Benefit Association, Animal Placement, El Concejo de Lompoc, just to name a few. We shoppers have contributed to this when we shop at Walmart. Did you know the average hourly wage is $1,295 with a chance of advancement? And they hire the old and the handicap. Marty, the Walmart manager, started as an hourly worker 19 years ago and has been a manager for the last five years. They offer stock options, affordable health and dental coverage, profit sharing, and other incentives. It can't be the competition, because the big stores weren't afraid of competition when they added florists, pharmacies, cleaners to their grocery stores. Did the city worry about the party shop when they allowed not one but two Halloween stores to open? I'm in favor of the expansion for several reasons. First and foremost, Walmart has been good to Lompoc. Next, the building expansion gives jobs to construction workers and jobs, whether full or part-time, for store clerks. There would be an extra 85 jobs with the approximately 200 existing associates. When it comes to part-time jobs, would you rather have unemployment or a part-time job? We have a problem, and it's broken. Let's fix it and allow this expansion, and welcome other businesses to come to Lompoc with less red tape. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your comments. Again, the only item we're discussing tonight is to, whether to set the date for the hearing when these issues will be heard, and if you, if you want to make comments on the merits of the proposal, the people that will be hearing that in January, there'll be three different faces at least up here at that time, so you're, you might want to save your comments until then. Is there anyone else that would like to rise and talk to us about the item before us? Seeing none, we'll call us back to the council. What are the wishes? Ms. Martner?
I would like to clarify a little bit of why exactly and the logic behind January 18th, 2011. We have two council meetings in the month of December. One of them would be the one where the new officers are sworn in, and then there is yet another one, December 21st. And I would like to know why was not that chosen, December 21st, just to deal with this in an expeditious manner?
Councilmember Martner, the holiday season is generally a season where people are very busy with their personal lives and preparation for the holidays, so.
So the rationale was, we're too close to Christmas to be doing this. Is that the same rationale, that we're too close to New Year's to do it on January the 4th?
Generally, when the holiday, during the holiday season, the city does attempt to stay away from that. stay away from that time period in order to allow maximum public participation.
So the first available period will be January 18th?
That's correct.
That's the logic?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Durham.
Well firstly, if I were one of the two new council members and our mayor stepping in, I would want a little bit more time to be able to go through everything. So personally, I think the 18th might be even too early. But nevertheless, I make a, never mind, Mr. Lingle has his light on, so.
Councilwoman Lingle.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to ask the same question that Ms. Martner did, but after reading the letter, there's no objections from either side's staff. The city of Lompoc is recommending the 18th. Walmart is agreeing to the 18th, so as long as both sides agree to the 18th. Actually, I was going to, before coming to this meeting, I was going to recommend we have it at our next meeting on December 7th, but I guess that would be way too soon, since we've all been exposed to it for the past couple of years. But since both parties have agreed to the 18th, I would like to make a motion that we accept staff recommendations for setting the date for January 18th.
I second that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second on the floor. Any other comments? Seeing none, motion passes. I can see the lights from here. 401. I will invite Councilwoman Rougey to come back in and join us. Item number 10 on the agenda, we'll hear from Director of Parks, Recreation, Urban Forestry, Dan McCaffrey, on Park and Pool Maintenance Assessment District Statement.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, our viewing audience at home, and members of the audience here, and my fellow coworkers. A little background on tonight's report. In the spring of 2002, the city proposed an assessment program for the funding of a portion of the Lompoc Aquatic Center for a park improvement and other park and recreation maintenance services. City property owners supported the assessment ballot, and the council approved and levied the assessments. Each following year, the council directs the consulting engineer to prepare an engineer's report for assessment consideration. The engineer's report includes the proposed assessment budget and an updated assessment for each parcel in the city. In May of 2003, the council adopted Resolution Number 5092, Para 3, establishing the Park Maintenance and City Pool Assessment District Oversight Committee to monitor the annual expenditure of funds of the assessment district. At the conclusion of each fiscal year, the city's finance department compiles the assessment district statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances, which is then reviewed by the oversight committee. On October 28th of this year, the oversight committee met and reviewed the assessment district statement for the period of July 1, 2009, through June 30, 2010. The minutes of that meeting are found in the attachment in the staff report before you tonight, and it reflects the activity and the actions of that meeting. Tonight's recommendation before you is that council review and approve the City of Lompoc Park and Pool Maintenance Assessment District Statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the period of July 1, 2009, through June 30, 2010. This concludes my report. I am available for questions, as is Management Services Director Brad Wilkey. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCaffrey. Mr. Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. McCafferty, in the report, there is, there are a list of questions to the commission, or committee members, Mr. Harmon and Mr. Fink had. Were those, were their questions and concerns addressed to them, or are they, are they still pending?
That's correct. They were all addressed, and they were done so in the meeting of October 28th.
Okay. And were they addressed, in your, in your opinion, to their satisfaction?
That is correct.
Thank you.
We'll, seeing no question, more comments or questions up here, we'll open the item for public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to discuss the item before us? Seeing no one rise, we'll close the public comment on this item and bring it back to the council. What are the wishes of the council? Any action before us? Mr. Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to move to accept staff, or accept the report, but I also want to commend the commission. There are some very favorable comments, especially from Mr. Fink, who, as we all know, can be at times critical, but he had some very favorable comments, and so I appreciate the work that you've done over the past year. That being said, I will move that we accept, accept the staff report as written.
We have a motion, Ms. Rougey.
I'll, I'll second it, but Councilmember Lingle and I were at the last, last year's assessment meeting, which needed, the report needed a lot of work, and I wanted to commend staff and Brad Wilkey also for, according to Mr. Fink and Mr. Harmon, that was a much more concise and a better, better put-together report. So I commend, you know, staff and the, and the committee for their oversight, thorough, thoroughly looking it over, so I appreciate that.
Do you have a motion, a second? So let's cast our votes. Items unanimous, item, city business item, new business item 11, consideration of the draft fire code ordinance, again, Acting Chief States.
Honorable Mayor and council, I'm here to, on the subject of the adoption of the 2010 California Fire Code. Staff's recommendation is, after reading by title only, introduce ordinance number 15, if I can be able to read it better, I put my glasses on. Ordinance number 1573, Para 10, to adopt by reference, as required by state law, the 2009 International Fire Code with necessary California amendments and standard referred to as the 2010 California Fire Code as part of the Lompoc Municipal Code. And in the background, the California Fire Code is published every three years by order of the California Legislature. Once adopted by the state, those standards have the force of law and take effect 180 days after publication. The effective date for the 2010 edition of the California Fire Code is January 1, 2011. Cities and counties throughout the state are required to enforce the 2010 code provisions on and after January 1, 2011. The proposed ordinance amends Lompoc's municipal code, so the model codes adopted and published by the state are thereby referenced in local code. The purpose of the California Fire Code is to establish minimum requirements necessary to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the public by regulating, regulating, and governing, the safeguarding of life and property from fire, and explosion hazards arising from the storage, handling, and use of hazardous substances, materials, and devices, and from conditions hazardous to life or property in the occupancy of buildings and premises in the city of Lompoc, providing for the issuance of permits and collection of fees. The proposed amendments and deletions to the International Fire Code are those necessary to eliminate conflicts with existing Lompoc Municipal Code provisions, and provide amendments that are necessary due to local climatic, geological, or topographical conditions present in Lompoc, as permitted by state law. In a conclusion, the California Fire Code is the official triennial, and publication of the adoptions, amendments, and repeal of administrative regulations to California Code of Regulations, Title 24, also referred to as the California Building Standards Code. The code is mandatory in the state of California, and by adopting this ordinance, we are allowed to make certain amendments, as shown in Sections 1 and 2 of the proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Chief States. Did you have something you wanted to say on this one? I'll ask the city attorney for a comment first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was a minor non-substantive modification made to the ordinance that was published on the website, so we just thought that we should notify the public of that. The change was basically made because I had removed something from the code, and there was a reference to a different section that needed to be changed. So it was very minor, but it was important to at least identify it. The council was aware of that from an email that I sent you, and you already received the copies of the changed ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time from the members of the council? Seeing none, we'll open this for public comment. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the item before us? Seeing no one rise, we'll bring it back to the, to the council. Mr. Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief States, I understand that there will be a workshop?
Yes, tomorrow at
Tomorrow, okay.
5:30.
And how was the notice put out for the different people that wanted to, would like to attend this?
That one, I'm not quite sure.
I was wondering if anyone can, the reason I'm asking this, I've, I've been, I've been told that some people were not notified, so I don't know if there's...
So I believe a list was put together and mailed out. I'd say I wasn't sure, I was gone all last week on vacation.
Ms. Barcelona, would you comment on that?
Councilmember Lingle, I've been advised there is a list of contractors and engineers, and a notice that advised about the workshop, as well as additional information, and we can provide that to you.
Okay, thank you. So the workshop is tomorrow evening, here at City Hall, at what time?
5:30 to 7:00.
Okay.
It'll be the building official and myself.
Okay, thank you.
Will be here.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Durham.
Well, Chief States indicated the operative, you know, statement, and that is, it's a code that's mandatory, or, you know, by the state of California. And if we approve it tonight, that gives us an opportunity to work with that code at a future date, but still protects us. So I'm going to make a motion that we accept the recommendations from staff on the Code of 1573, 10.
I'll second it.
We have a motion second before we vote on that. I'll ask the city clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 1573, parentheses 10. An ordinance of the city of Lompoc, California, amending Sections 15.12.010 and 15.12.020, adopting by reference, as amended herein, the 2010 edition of the California Fire Code.
Thank you. We have a motion to, to adopt this ordinance. The ordinance has been read. Let's cast our vote. Would you, I leaned on the wrong button. Thank you. That motion passes. We would have all been all read up there. That, that concludes the, the business listed on the agenda, except for written communications. Do we have any to read tonight? Any oral communications? There's two minutes to speak at this time, if anyone would like to. Seeing no one rise, and a final opportunity for council requests, comments, and meeting reports. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make one comment, because fortunately, he stuck around. Last Friday night, the Four Score Church held an activity at the Aquatic Center and also the YMCA, where we had a record-breaking turnout with students. We had 1,220 kids show up for this event, and, you know, I know you're going to hate me, Mr. Attorney, but God bless Lompoc, I'm telling you. It, it was, it was a wonderful evening. What I was impressed with was our very own Mr. Dan McCaffrey climbed up our climbing wall. Of course, as tall as he is, he was halfway to the top before he got off the ground, but it was, it was fun had by everybody. Like I said, we had a very mixed group of young men and women from both schools, that they ate a ton of pizza and drank a ton of soda. So they were probably wired until Saturday morning. But again, I want to thank everybody that came out and helped with that event, and especially a heartfelt thank you to the Four Score Church for their dedication. They had approximately 100-plus members of their church that just tore it up, so thank this entire community. The police department was there, and staff, which was outstanding, interacted well, and I just, I just can't say enough. It was wonderful, so thank, thank you, Lompoc.
Thank you. Mr. Durham. Mr. Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Durham, I want to echo that. It was a great turnout. My, both my grandkids were there. Not that it's important, but who won the game?
Well, the gentleman, the one, the iPod Touch? Is that what you're talking about?
Oh, the game, the like, the 50 to 20 game.
Oh, gosh, I wasn't going to go that way.
Okay, okay. This is
They're all students.
Okay, yeah, I know. Okay. That being said...
That being not said.
I just want to just bring up again that I've requested, and I, we have been slipping a little bit, our updates on the Economic Development Cal Ed Program and the Community Center. I just want to make sure that we're going to stay on schedule in getting these quarterly reports and monthly reports on those, those projects. The other thing I'd like to talk about is, or make a request, I understand that the fire department request for proposal for the county contract is going before the Board of Supervisors, and that is something that I'd like to see come before us as soon as possible. We are coming into budget times, and the outcome of that, whether it's going to the county or staying with the city, I think is very important for our budget cycle, so I'd like to see, once the county board of supervisors recommends that it comes before the city, I'd like to see it come before us as soon as possible. Thank you.
Ms. Martner.
I appreciate Councilmember Lingle bringing this up. I was also going to bring this up, and it's not just a question whether it's coming up to the council. What needs to happen here is that this council gave a direction to the staff to make a request for the proposal, and I think this council needs to be told whether there is a proposal or not. Also, the public needs to be informed of whatever the outcome of all of that was, because there was a direction that was given to the staff. So I am looking for an update from the part of the administration to tell us what the status is, whatever that status may be, but I think it is proper procedure to make that, to give that update, and to update the public. So I would like to see that, if possible, at the next agenda item, as what is the status? Because I've heard, you know, hallway conversations that is a yes or a nay or whatever, what, what needs to happen here is that it needs to be put in the public context and discussed. So I would like to make an agenda item request that we do get an update at the next council meeting.
I will second that.
We, I'll, I'll add my name, so that we have three, three votes to put, to put that on for discussion at the next council meeting, and I'll contact, I've, I've had some, some contact with the county, and I think that there, there may be a need for, for discussion on that. But, but I think...
May I just ask a question? Do you want that to be on the agenda before the election is certified, or do you want it to be on the agenda after the election is certified?
it to be on the agenda after the election is certified?
If I may, I guess the procedure would say that it was this council that made the direction to the staff, so wouldn't it be adequate that, that gets, that a status update gets given to this council?
It's your choice.
I mean, it seems to me that that's a procedural thing. If all of us voted here to give this direction to the staff, shouldn't the staff come back to us? So, I would think it has to be before the next, you know...
I, I'd suggest that it be agendized for both.
Okay.
Because...
Sounds good.
The, the, this council did ask for the proposal. There's been a rough draft put together, as I understand it, and I, I understand it, it does not show any significant advantage, but, but that, to, to contracting with the county.
Okay, without getting into discussing with the report, Mayor, and I'd say, all I wanted to do is make it clear, and when you said, "put it on both," I'm not sure I understand that. You mean, have two discussion items?
I think, I think, I think we ought to hear it, but I think what the county needs to know before they spend a lot more money is, does, is the council really serious, and does the council want, does the council, the city of Lompoc, want them to go spend more money putting their, putting more detail onto the skeleton proposal that they put together? And that's quite expensive.
That's much, that's much...
And if, if the new council doesn't want them to go ahead, then, then I think the county should know that, so...
That's much different, and it's fine if that's you want to put it, that's much different than what the motion was, the motion was asking just for a status report.
Right.
If you now want to have not only just a status, but also something, a council action item on the agenda, or just a status report?
At this time, I am requesting a status report for the present council. Now, if the new council, after listening to the staff report, want to make a, another proposal, and whatever that one may be, that's a decision of the next council, and it's presumptuous for us to try to go and make a change on that. So, all I can ask for now is to get a status report for this present council on the direction that we gave the staff. That's all.
Mr. Mayor and council, we'll agendize it for the agenda on the 7th, for a status report.
Thank you. We have any other requests from the members of the council? Seeing none, we're adjourned.